Matt Mosley.
Here.
Aaron Barowski.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Sue Grodick.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Stephen Coyle.
Here.
Andy Sullhertz.
Here.
Will everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And this evening, we have minutes to approve from our meeting of February 24th. Any comments or corrections?
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Second.
To approve the minutes, Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Sullhertz.
Yes.
And next, we have a speaker from the Cleveland Museum of Natural History, Lana Ragland, if you'd like to step up, and she is a community engagement specialist. Thank you for being with us this evening.
Of course. Thank you so much for having me all. My name is Lana Ragland. As mentioned, I am community engagement specialist for Cleveland Museum of Natural History. For the last five years, we've been under a major transformation, and along with that five years, we were given a grant with the last three years that allowed Cleveland and East Cleveland residents to visit the museum completely free on Sunday. Well, this December, the Mandale Foundation renewed that grant when we were also able to expand it to five more cities, and Brooklyn is one of those. In addition to that, we were able to add another day to the program. So every Saturday and Sunday, the residents of Brooklyn can visit the Cleveland Museum of Natural History completely free. It covers their entire party. It covers all of those brand-new galleries that have been renovated, our Wildlife Center, and any of those programs that may happen on the floor of those days. We are really excited to be able to share this opportunity with you, and we welcome any questions. Feel free to contact me. Mary Jo has been wonderful about connecting us with you all, and we do have staff here that's came to support as well because we have residents in the city as well. Mark Anthony is one of my esteemed colleagues who came out to support. So we just wanted to make sure that we're letting you know just as much we want you to be in our community, we want to be a part of yours. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one brief question, and that is, do they have to get the tickets online first? Or can you get them at the door? And do you show ID?
That is a wonderful question. We do try to make it as easy as possible. I do find that it expedites the process if you can do it in advance, online, give us a phone call. But however, of course, we do facilitate that process at our desk. We love to be able to help folks out. We even love to be able to share that news when folks don't know about it, and they give us their ID, and we can tell them that they get to come in for free. So absolutely, we do that at the desk. An ID is preferred, but a piece-of-mail billing statement, anything that has that name and address on it, we're pretty flexible about getting people in for this program.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Okay, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you all so much. You all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Okay, next, Councilman Barowski is going to be presenting a proclamation to Mr. Michael Bachmiller of Canopy Child Advocacy Center.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, Brooklyn. About two weeks ago, I was recommended by our wonderful Chief Malkey of the Police Department to speak with Ms. Jennifer Johnson from an organization named Canopy to help our detectives with interviews on child abuse and assault cases. Tonight, I want to welcome Mr. Bachmiller up to the podium. I'm guessing you're able to hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. First of all, thank you for coming out, representing them. So April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, so this proclamation is just stating our support for the organizations such as yours and others that help children through not only Brooklyn, but our entire communities around here. Whereas Brooklyn, Ohio is committed to protecting our most vulnerable and ensuring children grow up safe, healthy, educated, and prepared to reach their full potential; and whereas child abuse and neglect contribute to adverse childhood experiences that can have profound, lifelong negative impacts on lives; and whereas child abuse is preventable, and the cost of treating the impacts of child abuse is significantly higher than the cost of preventing it; and whereas consistent, early, effective prevention strategies have been proven to save lives, protect resources, strengthen and preserve Cuyahoga County's families by ending cycles of abuse and neglect; whereas children raised in safe, stable, and nurturing environments are more likely to enjoy good physical and mental health, succeed academically and socially, and achieve economic prosperity; and whereas educating adults how to use positive coping skills, seek options, and be flexible enables them to be stronger, more resilient individuals throughout their lives and create more stable environments and brighter futures for children; and whereas child abuse and neglect prevention is a community responsibility, and on behalf of Cuyahoga County's children, we join with Canopy Child Advocacy Center; and whereas we assert that during April and throughout the year, we all must come together against child abuse and neglect by supporting prevention programs so every child feels safe and nurtured by making sure each family has the support and education they need; and whereas we live by the wisdom of Frederick Douglass that it is easier to build strong children than to repair broken adults. Now more than ever, we must do all of our parts to help build strong children and give them access to safe, healthy futures. Now therefore, on behalf of the members of Brooklyn City Council and with the guidance of the Brooklyn Domestic Relations Commission, we do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Brooklyn, Ohio. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
He's going to... He's going to go ahead and speak on what Canopy does, what the organization, how they help us, help our detectives. Thank you very much.
Thank you. City Council and Mayor, thank you very much for having us here. Thank you for being one of the first cities in Cuyahoga County to put your commitment in writing like this. Canopy Child Advocacy Center is an independent nonprofit 501(c)(3). We're located at 2806 Payne Avenue in Cleveland. We opened in November 2018 initially to help respond to child sex abuse allegations, and we've expanded to any kind of child abuse or neglect for kids anywhere in Cuyahoga County. As the councilperson stated, a lot of what we do is help law enforcement. We also help Children's Services. We also help prosecution. But most importantly, we're here to help kids and families more than anything. The majority of our referrals do come from Children and Family Services along with law enforcement, but the most important thing that we exist for is to help children and families. What we provide, forensic interviews at Canopy, which is a specialized interview focused on helping kids give their narrative of whatever they've experienced. We feel it's best for that to happen at Canopy because it's a neutral, child-friendly location as opposed to being interviewed at police stations or in schools or in people's homes. We also have two sexual assault nurse examiners that work at Canopy to provide non-acute exams for sexual abuse cases. We also have family advocates that are there to support our families in essentially any way possible. Our advocates are kind of like case managers. They provide a lot of the same assistance and resources that Children and Family Services can provide, and we want that service to continue because we know some families just don't want to be engaged with Children and Family Services. We also provide direct access to trauma therapy for any of the kids that are referred to Canopy. Our goal with our trauma therapy connection is that every child referred to us who's going to be connected to a therapist does not have to wait more than 30 days to meet their therapist. Just briefly, in 2024, the 696 Kids Child Abuse Hotline for Cuyahoga County Division of Children and Family Services received just under 20,000 phone calls last year alone. Just under 20,000. So last year, Canopy in 2024, we served over 600 children. We were able to provide over 4,000 individual incidents of child advocacy to all of our clients, which includes over 400 forensic interviews and over 100 medical exams as well. Again, I'm here to thank all of you for putting your commitment in writing. I brought information cards in case any of your residents were to contact you about where to turn if child abuse or neglect happens in their home or if they learn of anyone in particular in Cuyahoga County that's experiencing it. And I have one extra for the chief as well, even though he knows Jennifer Johnson. So, may I approach? Thank you. Do you guys have any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Thank you. Thank you. No, and thank you for the important work that you do.
Thank you all. Have a great night.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have the first public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say pertaining to a legislative item on the agenda, please step forward, state your name and address, and you will be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or less. Seeing no one, we'll move on. We now have reports of committees, commissions, and boards. I'll start with the Finance Committee, and this evening, the Finance Committee report will be the same as the Committee of the Whole report because we had the exact same agenda items addressed at both meetings. The Finance Committee did meet at 6:00 PM this evening, and under New Business Resolution 2025-7 is on first reading with a request to suspend the rules due to the timing of the contract, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Simvee LLC to provide information technology professional services to the city of Brooklyn. This is a one-year contract from March 15, 2025, to March 14, 2026, a monthly service fee of $7,916.50, and that includes, among other things, regularly scheduled hybrid onsite remote resource, four hours every Monday and eight hours Thursday every week excluding holidays, and up to 25 hours of gold expedited service annually, which includes eight-hour response 24/7 for interruption to normal business workflows, system outage, and security breach. And we've been dealing with this firm for quite a long time, and we're very pleased with the service they provide us. And both the Finance Committee and the Committee of the Whole recommended adoption for all the legislation I'm going to read. Ordinance 2025-6, also on first reading with a request to suspend the rules, authorizing the updated capital improvement plan for 2025. There's a reduction of $50,000 under parks, and that's because the dog park came in under budget. The Memphis Beautification, which covers both the East End and the West End as you come into the city from Lyndale, that is increasing by $40,000 because the bid came in. It went from $78,000 to not to exceed $118,000. Our Streets Program came in at $200,000 less. So the net result is a reduction in $210,000 in the capital improvement budget. Ordinance 2025-7, which is on first reading with a request to suspend the rules due to the limited amount that the rate is good for. This is authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract agreement with New Wave Energy LLC as a supplier of natural gas for city buildings. We had an extensive explanation by our consultant, Mr. Scott Rafferty. This rate is $4.75 per 1,000 cubic feet, and it's for a three-year term. Next is ordinance 2025-8, also up for first reading with a request to suspend the rules due to the limited time that this rate is available. Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract slash agreement with CPV Retail Energy as supplier of electric energy for the service garage, senior center, city hall, police station, and the fire station. And this is at a rate of $6.11 for the energy line loss and ancillary charges, and this is for a 60-month term. And that completes both the Finance Committee and the Committee of the Whole. Now we'll move on to Recreation Board. Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. Brooklyn's Easter Egg Hunt will be held on Saturday, April 12, at Veterans Memorial Park. Check in at the Senior Center at 10:30 AM. The Easter Bunny will be available for pictures. Event is free. Registration required. Spring swimming lessons for kids on Saturdays starting April 5 and Wednesdays starting April 9. Costs residents $55. Partnership $65. Non-residents $70. For more information, contact the Rec Center at www.brooklynrec.com. American Red Cross Lifeguard Training. Costs residents $190. Non-residents $200. Partnership $195. Must be at least 15 years of age by the last class. Register at www.brooklynrec.com. Hiring incentive. If you are hired from this class and you maintain employment for at least six months in the average of 12 hours per week, you will be reimbursed $100. If you maintain employment and hours with the Rec Center for a year, you will be reimbursed the remainder of the class fees. Please contact Maria McGinty at 216-635-4284 or RECINFO@brooklynohio.gov. Brooklyn Ice Show skating through the seasons, May 2 and May 3 at 7 PM. Tickets are $10 each and can be purchased at www.brooklynrec.com. Brooklyn Rec Baseball and Softball. Ages 3 to 4, T-ball. Ages 5 to 6, Rookie Coach Pitch. Register at www.jumpstartssports.com. 8U Coach Pitch Baseball and Softball, ages 6 through 8. Registration is open through March 31st. Residents $55. Non-residents $65. Practices begin in May and games in June. 10U, 12U, 14U, 15U Baseball and Softball Leagues. Registration is open through March 31st. Costs residents $70. Non-residents $80. More info, contact the Rec Center at www.brooklynrec.com. Brooklyn Spring Soccer, April 15 through May 20. Ages 3 to 4, Tuesdays, 5:30 to 6:30 PM. Ages 5 to 6, Tuesdays, 6:30 to 7:30 PM. Register at www.jumpstartssports.com through April 11. The next Recreation Board meeting will be held on April 21st in the Rec Center Meeting Room, 7 PM, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next is the Domestic Relations Commission. Councilman Barowski.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, Brooklyn. This past March 12, the Domestic Relations Commission met at the Public Library to further discuss ideas and plan an agenda in follow-up to our earlier meeting this year. From the conversation of the school's kid club filling out Valentine Day cards and then being dropped off to the residents of Brooklyn Point, the commission discussed briefly about the possibility of filling out Easter cards ourselves and dropping them off as well. We spoke on House Bill 322, legislation that is taking effect this upcoming April to protect Ohio's children from sexual abuse. Distributing, posting flyers in restrooms around public buildings, businesses with their permission and so forth that would be pertaining to teenage dating violence, domestic violence, elder abuse. All flyers have a contact number on them to call for help. A big thank you to commission member Kelly Crawl for getting those flyers done. Pardon me. And also, another big thank you to all the members of the Domestic Relations Commission. The last year or so, we really worked on updating our ordinance, our legislation, to what we wanted this commission to be. Now we're working on actually fulfilling the work that needs to be done. And I'd like to also say thank you to Ms. Johnson from Canopy, reaching out to me about this proclamation. On behalf of Chief Malkey, I want to say thank you to him as well. He reached out to me and following up with it. And I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Bachmiller for showing up as well and representing Canopy and explaining to us what they do for children, not only in Brooklyn, but in Cuyahoga County. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission Reports. Councilman Grodick.
Thank you. The Board of Zoning Appeals held a meeting on March 20. There were two items on the agenda. The first one was a variance request from 6775 Memphis Avenue to reduce the parking spaces, and that was denied. The second variance was a request from 10750 Brook Park to reuse what is considered an abandoned sign pole for the restaurant's new sign, and that was approved. Their next meeting is scheduled for April 24 at 6 PM. And as far as the Planning Commission goes, the April meeting was canceled due to lack of applicants. So the next meeting would be May 7 at 6 PM if there are any applications that need to be decided. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is School Board Liaison. Councilman Mosley.
Thank you, Council President. This past Tuesday, March 18, I attended the school board meeting, and here are some of the key takeaways. Construction has already started on the Family Resource Center slash preschool, which was formerly the county library here at the end of Hurricane Alley and Ridge Road. The gym in the high school is scheduled to begin construction in late May. The stadium turf is going to be replaced starting in June of this year. Coming up soon, April 12, there are going to be two events that the school is hosting. One of them is a walkthrough of the high school for members of the community, alumni, anybody to see the current conditions of the school before construction starts. So you can kind of... It hasn't really changed since most of the alumni has been there, but so you can get a good before and after. That's from 10 AM till 1 PM. The second is an extravaganza between noon and 2. This is open to all students and families from preschool till third grade. The city is hosting an egg hunt that day, as well as Mr. Tansky spoke about in his rec report. The time of those events are staggered, so that if you're able to and you're feeling up to it, you can attend both events. There's also a coffee chat with the superintendent on April 26 and May 3. Those start at 9 AM. And there was a short update on the numbers so far from open enrollment. I will hold off reporting on those for now because they don't have all the information. It's still open, so I'm just going to hold off on reporting anything for that. Lastly, I would like to report that the school board has extended the contracts of both the Superintendent Dr. Kalaris and the Treasurer Robert Sheerhart. The next meeting is a workshop, April 7, at 6:15 in the Treasurer's Office, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Connecting and Belonging Commission. Councilman Coyle.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening. The Connecting and Belonging Commission has been in the process of setting a date for their inaugural meeting. Mary Jo has done a tremendous job trying to juggle the various schedule requests of the 11-member commission. If you're a part of it or if you would like to attend, please be aware that there will be a communication going out that the first meeting will be held at 6 PM on Monday, April 21, in the City Hall Community Room, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have reports of council, and this evening, we begin with Councilman Mosley.
Good evening again. On behalf of council, I would like to thank Mr. Brock Miller from Canopy for coming out and accepting the proclamation, as well as Lana Ragland from the Cleveland Museum of Natural History for coming out and presenting at today's council. It's a great thing to experience, and even better, it's free. My wife was there with our kids the first weekend that it was available. This week is Literacy Week at our city school system, and I'm very excited to be invited back to read to the kids. I had a blast last year. I was lucky enough to get the chance to read again this year. It's going to be a little extra special because I'm going to be reading to my son's class, and usually, my wife's the one volunteering at school and not me. I believe both our chiefs, Paul and Chief Milkie, are going to be there, as well as Councilman Sullhertz, and the mayor is reading two different times, I believe. And Ms. Grodick is always at the school, so... Just a reminder that our senior grass-cutting program applications are due by the end of the month, which is a week away from today. There is one week for that, and the exterior home grant repair, the application's closed for that May 9, which is only a month and a week away. So please get that in and take our money. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Barowski.
Thank you, Council President. Very short tonight. My fellow members of the Safety and Environmental Committee, we are working currently on scheduling that of a safety meeting regarding such issues as speeding and reckless driving concerns that were brought to us, our attention on Idwood, and e-bike laws and how they pertain to users in the city of Brooklyn. Once that meeting is scheduled, residents will be invited to the open meeting for discussion, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. Good evening. I just had one thing to bring up, and I know the mayor has been talking about those on-ramps going on 480. And so has Mr. Ardino. They are going to be paved. I've talked to three different representatives there, and they wanted to push it farther than April. Well, I went rounds with them all through the winter. I've talked to them a few times. That those things have to be done ASAP, as soon as this weather breaks. That pavement that they put down temporarily is breaking up. The ramps are breaking up again. So I believe, if I'm right, Mayor, that it's supposed to start beginning of April. Somewhere near, somewhere in April? Or did they push it off? That I don't know. I'm not sure. But from the last communications that I had with them, somewhere in April, that they are going to break down both of those ramps on the, I believe, east side of Ridge. So...
I'll respond with my report. I have it in mind.
Yeah. Hopefully, it's not in April, Mayor. It's going to be close to it, that those ramps will be finished and done, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Grodick.
Thank you. As Mr. Mosley expressed, or let everyone know, it is Right to Read Week in Brooklyn, and I have a second-grade class that will be very excited to welcome Chief Milkie, so he will be there, and he is going to be the reader in room 240 on Thursday. Also, that is our literacy night, so if you are a parent and have students in grades K through 4, it is literacy night. It's not too late to come if you didn't sign up. It's a wonderful tradition that we've had since we've had the Rodone Elementary. We've been celebrating literacy night during Right to Read Week. Also, a wonderful celebration that no one has mentioned yet, but I'm sure it's going to be coming up. The High School Play was this weekend, so if you had a chance to see The Wizard of Oz, it was a wonderful, wonderful production, and congratulations to everyone. We call it the high school production, but it really starts in 5th grade. We had 5th graders and 6th graders as munchkins. It's so great to see so many of the old 1st and 2nd grade faces that I knew and see them on stage. And if you missed it, you missed a wonderful performance. But congratulations to every student, every parent, every staff member that was involved in that. And I'm sure there'll be another wonderful production next March. So if you missed this year's, you can catch next year's, and that ends my report.
Thank you. Councilman Coyle.
Thank you. Good evening again. I would like to call special attention to an important date a week from today. Transgender Day of Visibility is an annual event held on March 31 to honor and celebrate the lives, achievements, and visibility of transgender and gender nonconforming people. It's a day to raise awareness about the transgender community, highlight their contributions to society, and support the ongoing fight for equal rights and recognition. Unlike Transgender Day of Remembrance, which mourns those lost to violence, Transgender Day of Visibility focuses on celebrating living transgender individuals and amplifying their voices. With everything that has been happening in our country right now, I felt that it's even more important to recognize this date tonight. And then lastly, Brooklyn Area Pride, a new local 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, is hosting their first annual Color for Change Quilt Raffle fundraiser. The funds raised here will help support our community, various school events, and educational seminars. Tickets are $1 each or $6.5, and if you're interested, please contact one of their board members, or you can participate online by using the Zephy link posted on various social media platforms. And this concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Sullhertz.
Thank you. With regards to Chimney Swift Tower project between Keep Brooklyn Beautiful, City of Brooklyn, and Brooklyn City School District, within the past week, there was a nice article in Cleveland.com about the Brooklyn Father and Son woodworking duo, Jason Rice and his son Dominic. We tried to work on this project last year, and maybe with the timing delay from last year, we maybe now have the really perfect combination of people working on this project. Jason, the father, is a construction worker by trade, and his son is going to Polaris for construction trades. One more thing, since we all like to say Brooklyn is always kind of like that small-town-feeling type of place. Well, heard this morning from Jack, our Bruzy, that Home Depot is actually partnering with us on this project too, so we've gained more buy-in from this whole project. So... this project too, so we've gained more buy-in from this whole project. So, thank you and welcome aboard to Home Depot. The City of Brooklyn has an active affiliate for Keep Brooklyn Beautiful. One of the primary goals is to improve the environment through the city by conducting community cleanups in target areas with high amounts of litter and debris. We'll be organizing scheduled events throughout the good-weather months, starting probably within the next month. We're going to try to partner with some businesses if they are interested in enhancing Brooklyn through these cleanups, tree plantings, landscaping improvements, or other community activities. To learn more about Keep Brooklyn Beautiful and how your company can get involved, please contact me at acelhertz, A-C-E-L-C-H-E-R-T-S, at brooklynohio.gov. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I have just a couple brief things. I know that another member already thanked Ms. Ragland for coming, but I did want to point something out. I know that she did mention that there was a renovation. There was an article, I think it was in the paper and on cleva.com, I want to say it was in December, and that article, you could look it up, I'm sure, online, really went into quite a bit of detail on the renovations. So, I would encourage Brooklyn residents to please take advantage of visiting the newly-renovated Natural History Museum. I know we're going to be going down, and it's nice that we can do it for free. And regarding the schools, the renewal issue is issue 19, and that's the renewal that the schools have on in this May primary. This was first passed in 2013, and it was renewed in 2018. So, if you have any questions about it, please contact a board member, or the treasurer, or superintendent, but this is an important issue for our community. I too would like to congratulate the performers, the pit orchestra, stage crew, faculty, staff, and parents on the fabulous performance of The Wizard of Oz. Brooklyn has a very long history of very good music and drama programs, and everyone who was involved just did such a wonderful job. I just can't say enough about it. So, congratulations to them, and we're all very proud of them. And Mayor, in Councilman Tansky's report, talking about soccer reminded me of something. Are we going to have the soccer program at Hurricane Alley this year, so the residents around Mark Guard will not have to worry about that? Thank you very much. And that completes my report. We'll move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you. Yes, to answer your question before I get started, that is the plan. They do have some events planned at Hurricane Alley, so there's an off chance we may have to play a couple of games over at Mark Court Park, but there will not be a scheduled event over there. It'll be kind of a wait-and-see-type approach. Just to provide some updates, Veterans Memorial Park upgrade, that construction is slated to begin in the next couple of weeks over at the park. They will be taking down a couple of trees as part of that. That'll start actually taking place this week. The 2025 Streets Program, Idlewood South and Springcrest North are the streets that'll be done. We are grateful, as Mrs. Pucci mentioned a moment ago, that these projects came in under budget, so we're happy to see that. The preconstruction meeting for that will take place early next month. A project that the city has been attempting to do for the last couple of years is a turn lane off of Memphis onto Tideman. We've had some difficulties in getting the utility companies to move their utilities. That work is supposed to be done by them by the end of April. Thankfully, the contract that we've had from two years ago has held their pricing for two years for us, and so they will begin that work once those utilities are finally moved. The Dog Park construction is kind of underway. We had to remove some debris and cut down some trees, and that work is being done this week. We'll have the actual preconstruction meeting for that to take place next week as well, or the next couple of weeks. To answer Mr. Tansky's questions, yes, the off-ramps off of I-480 onto Ridge Road are being done this year. There are actually three ramps that are being done in this area. One of them is in Cleveland. The other two are our ramps. They're doing the Cleveland one first. Ours will be the second and third. So, the eastbound ramp will be done second of the three, and that will begin on June the 7, and will go through August the 5. When they're finished with that, they'll jump to the westbound side. That'll be August 6 through October 2. These ramps will be closed during this construction, and of course, detours will be posted, and we'll keep residents updated as we draw closer to that timeline. Another project that's taking place on Ridge Road this summer is the water line. Will be lined on Ridge Road. It's a rather extensive project that will end up taking well over a year probably to get that completed, but that work is slated to begin sometime the month of June. It was already mentioned, but the senior grass cutting service has been brought back for this year. Applications are available at the Senior Center through the end of this month, and that program will actually kick off on May the 12. There's quite a few people that mentioned the levy tonight and the school issues. I did have the chance to interview Dr. Ted Calaris, the school superintendent, on the podcast that was started a few weeks ago, provide some very valuable insight on the levy, the upgrades taking place at the city schools this year, as well as the open enrollment that Mr. Mosley mentioned. So, I would encourage residents to hear directly from the superintendent by going to brooklynohiotoday.com, and you can listen to the podcast there. It was very good information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, we'll move on to directors' reports, and this evening, we'll hear from our Finance Director, Director Baguz.
Good evening. Thank you. Just one item from me tonight, just a review of the General Fund Financial Report through February. On the revenue side, overall revenues are 20% of the estimated amount, 12% more than prior year, due to an increase in income tax revenue resulting from an increase in one-time, non-recurring revenue that we received. On the bottom half of the income statement, commitments, commitments are 29% of the estimated amount, of the budgeted amount, and are 17% more than compared to February of last year. This is mainly due to an extra payroll that we had in January of this year compared to last year that will clear in March, and also the timing of certain encumbrances. Also, on the income tax front, we received our distributions from Rita for March. Total distribution was $1.5 million, which is $222,000 more than March of last year. Including this, our payments are classified as non-recurring or one-time revenue, so excluding those one-time revenue sources, our distributions for this month was actually $272,000 more than March of last year. Of this, withholding accounts for a gain of $237,000, and net profit and individual income taxes account for a gain of $35,000. So, overall, very strong, very positive news on the income tax front for March. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to legislation. Under New Business, we have Resolution 2025-7, which is on first reading with a request to suspend the rules, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Simvee LLC to provide information technology professional services to the city of Brooklyn. Any comments or questions?
Introduced by all to suspend the rules.
Second. To suspend the rules. Matt Mosley?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Seltzer?
Yes.
To adopt, Matt Mosley?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Seltzer?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-6, on first reading with a request to suspend the rules, authorizing the updated capital improvement plan for 2025. Any comments or questions?
Introduced by all to suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules. Matt Mosley?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Seltzer?
Yes.
To adopt, Matt Mosley?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Seltzer?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-7, up for first reading with a request to suspend the rules, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract slash agreement with New Wave Energy LLC as supplier of natural gas for city buildings. The rate is $4.75 per 1,000 cubic feet for a three-year term. Any comments or questions?
Introduced by all to suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules. Matt Mosley?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Seltzer?
Yes.
To adopt, Matt Mosley?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Seltzer?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-8, up for first reading with a request to suspend the rules, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract slash agreement with CPV Retail Energy as supplier of electric energy for the service garage, senior center, City Hall Police Station, and Fire Station. The rate is $6.11 per kilowatt hour for a 60-month term. Any comments or questions?
Introduced by all to suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules. Matt Mosley?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Seltzer?
Yes.
To adopt, Matt Mosley?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Seltzer?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we'll have our second public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say for the good and welfare of the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or less. Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on. Does the mayor or any other members of council have anything further? We need a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
To adjourn, Matt Mosley?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Seltzer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Jo.